It is six thirty-five. Call to order, Stanton City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority Joint Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Genesis, please lead us in the pledge. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Council Agency Authority Member Barrios is excused this evening. Council Agency Authority Member Taylor? Thank you. Council Agency Authority Member Warren?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chairman Torres?
Yes.
And Mayor Chairman Chauver is also excused this evening.
Our next item, Special Presentations and Awards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. This evening I have the update on the city's homeless outreach activities. I will be presenting the report for our city manager this evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and members of the city council. As the council is aware, for years, the city has been working on addressing issues related to homelessness. Most of this effort happens on a daily basis out of view of our residents and businesses. To ensure more transparency in our efforts to better inform the community regarding the resources the council has directed to address these issues, I will be providing a monthly report on homeless outreach and other activities. For those interested in reviewing past reports, you can find those beginning in 2021 on the city's website at www.stantonca.gov under the Public Safety Department. The reports represent a high-level summary of the efforts of over ten-plus employees who are dedicated in some manner to addressing homelessness-related issues. Tonight's report is for February 2025. Working as a team for the month of February, the city engaged in 119 proactive total client encounters, with eight of those being new client engagements. The team received 140 contacts from homeless individuals, advocates, service providers, and the Orange County Sheriff's Department for service assistance, coordination, and navigation. When contacted, the team provides the following services: Assesses the needs of the individual experiencing homelessness, offering shelter, connectivity to appropriate resources, offers storage at the city yard to individuals who seek shelter but cannot take all their articles with them, cleans up the debris and trash left behind and provides sanitation on public property and public property repairs, excuse me, provides residents and businesses with the outreach coordinator's direct contact information for any concerns for assistance. For the month of February, 109 offers of shelters were declined. Staff did receive three requests for shelter, but shelter beds were unavailable. Three individuals were connected with mental health support services. Two were placed in interim housing. Three received benefit services. And one received employment services. The highest priority areas in the city for December, based on calls and field observations, were Beach Boulevard in Chapman, Beach Boulevard in Garden Grove, Hollenbeck Park, Stanton Park, and Tina Pacific. The next item is real-life stories. Stanton Outreach Coordinators successfully placed an individual into the Buena Park Navigation Center in collaboration with the Hope Center OC, Orange County, with provided transportation to the shelter. This individual is seeking assistance in managing severe mental health issues and will have access to support services at the Buena Park Navigation Center. Public safety, staff recently engaged with a couple who have been longtime members of the homeless community in Stanton. The couple refuses to be separated, and so had to wait to obtain couples' beds at the Buena Park Navigation Center. Unfortunately, after a few weeks of residing in the shelter, they were removed to a domestic violence incident and are suspended until June 2025. This couple now frequents Hollenbeck Park and generates numerous calls for service. This scenario is indicative of the roadblocks that arise while providing services to members of the homeless community. Stanton Outreach Coordinators engaged with a male individual who was struggling with a mental health crisis. The outreach coordinator requested a response from the Orange County Sheriff's Department based on the statements made by the individual. The individual was provided with information regarding resources available and expressed interest in being placed on a voluntary psychiatric hold. The Orange County Crisis Stabilization Unit was contacted and was able to provide a bed to facilitate the psychiatric hold. Upon discharge, the individual will reengage with outreach coordinators with the intent of entering a shelter. While the city has allocated significant resources to outreach and has worked diligently to connect individuals with appropriate resources, the city does not tolerate antisocial or illegal behavior, regardless of the perpetrator? Regardless of the perpetrator. As such, the city, its code enforcement, Public Works, and Orange County Sheriff's Department contract continues to enforce all violations with the city's municipal code and state law to the full extent of the law. Thank you, and that concludes staff's report this evening. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have a quick question. Mr. Ren, you can probably answer it. I believe I heard that we had, or I read the report, that we had two homeless in motels. How long did that last, and did we get them some kind of supportive housing?
Mayor members, council. We use our motels typically as a bridge in advance of permanent supportive housing. In those cases, this time around, one of them was exactly that. So it was utilized for a three-, four-day period, essentially to keep them on the right path in advance of placement in permanent supportive housing. One of, I would say, the other primary way that those motels are utilized, or motel, we utilize motel rooms, would be to assist individuals prepare for key appointments that would help facilitate permanent supportive housing. For example, if an individual on the street had a mental health appointment the next day, it wouldn't be uncommon for us to help them into a motel-type scenario so they could get cleaned up and in a decent state in advance of their meeting. And then for us to know where they are to help get them to those appointments.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Jim, please tell the homeless outreach coordinators that they're doing a really great job. And thank you to code enforcement as well. I know you guys have been working really hard lately. Okay. Next item, Consent Calendar. All items on the consent calendar may be acted on simultaneously unless a council/board member requests separate discussion and/or action. Are there any items that the council wishes to pull for separate discussion? Pauline J.
And then also, we received no correspondence requesting separate discussion, Mr. Mayor Protem. Are there any members of the audience wishing to pull any items from the consent calendar for separate discussion by the city council or comment by the public? Hearing none, seeing none, Mr. Mayor? Protem?
Perfect. Item J, right?
We can motion and second for the remainder of the balance of the consent calendar, please.
We get a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item, all items on the consent calendar pass with the exception of item 6J.
6J, renewal of declaration that an emergency condition exists arising from the damage to the westerly end of Stanton Park Pedestrian Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilmember Warren, your questions on item 6J.
Yeah, I'd just like to have Director Caesar give us a little update on that.
Yeah, council members, members of the city council. I, today, actually, we brought a pretty good brief. We are close to getting the bridge starting fabrication. So that's probably going to take us about four weeks. We plan on starting that next week and then hopefully start construction mid-April, which would be kind of mobilizing. And then hopefully after that forty, after forty working days, we could finish the job, finish the project. So I'm looking at, you know, beginning of June to, you know, have the bridge there and we could do a ribbon cutting, kind of go from there.
Thank you. And I'll motion to pass it, Jane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, none. Item passes, three, zero.
Item seven, public hearings. We have none. Item number eight, unfinished business. We have none. Item number nine, new business. Nine A, city council consideration for appointments to fill ten vacancies on the Stanton Community Service Condition, Commission, Stanton Planning Commission, and Stanton Public Safety Committee for terms ongoing with the city council election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Again, this is for appointments to fill ten vacancies on each of our commissions and committee. Per the city's municipal code, it requires a submission of applications and interviews prior to appointment. The city council, by majority vote, may waive the requirement to an interview only for persons previously appointed by the city council and who are requesting reappointment to another term. The city clerk's office has received a total of fifteen applications, and eleven applicants are present this evening. The appointment process will go as follows. Each applicant will be called to the podium and will be asked three questions to answer as part of the interview process. You will be given seven minutes to answer those questions as well as the questions provided to you by the city council. In addition to the preset questions, again, the interview process will take, will then be open to the city council should each of you have additional questions to ask each of our applicants this evening. Once the interview has concluded, the applicant will be asked to have a seat while the next applicant is called to the podium for his or her interview. Once interviews have concluded for all applicants, I will then proceed with the nomination portion of the process. That concludes staff's report. Mr. Mayor Protem, I will now begin with the interview portion of the process. This is probably the hard part. Each person will be called to the podium in alphabetical order by utilizing the applicant's last name. So I do apologize, Mr. Barker, but at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Brian A. Barker to the podium. Hello. So if you can give me one moment. The microphones do have a bubble, so I'm going to ask you if you could, you can move the microphone closer to you and if you can test that microphone for me by just stating your name. A little bit closer for me, please? Okay, one moment. And one more time, sir. Okay. This is tricky part. It likes me to come down. Test, test. So then if you just stay in this bubble, once you turn your head and you kind of leave, it'll turn off. You can move it close to you or hold it, however you're comfortable. Thank you, Mr. Barker. So your first and, your first and only choice is for the Planning Commission. So I'm going to go ahead and proceed with the questions.
Okay.
So question number one. Can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you are interested in becoming a Plan, Planning Commissioner? What personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected to serve on the Planning Commission?
So, I'm a recent resident of Stanton. I've been here for about two years, and I've lived in many different communities. And this is the first community that I actually feel like I will feel a part of. I have this call to service, and I feel like City of Stanton, particularly the Planning Commission, would be uniquely suited for my skills and ability. Despite not having any proper training within urban planning, I do have a pretty good academic record. I have a Master's of Arts in Geography and a Master's in Science and Environmental Planning. I understand the concept of interconnectedness between residents, commercial needs, environmental needs, and how that relates to further planning for future generations, particularly for environmental needs.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Second question is, what do you see are the challenges and opportunities in the city's future in the next year as well as the next five to ten years related to planning?
And then, the immediate need that I see for planning is traffic issues. I live in Bradford Place. We are constantly seeing cars nearly hitting children, nearly hitting kids. Parking's a nightmare. It's really difficult. There's a lot of, there's a lot of intersections with no stop signs. And it's just kind of a free fall, particularly in the morning hours when kids are going to and from school and getting on and off buses. I think that is an immediate and direct need for the community, well, my portion of the community. Long-term, about five years, I would like to see an increase in walkability, particularly within my community. The increase of bike access, pedestrian access, an increase on crosswalks and, or rail trails along unused portions of the railroads to get to and from parking, to get to and from our city parks. That is something I would just love to see, and I think would just generally benefit the community overall.
And the third and final question from me. How will you approach the work of balancing the property rights of a project owner, developer, and the adjacent neighbors?
So I think a lot of that is wrapped up with the code and exactly how things are parceled out according to like the general plan. I'm a big fan of general plan. I've read through Stanton General Plan, all 148 pages. The way that I would mitigate or, I think the proper word would be to appease both parties is to make sure that the property rights of the one person does not impede on the other. I'm also a big fan of where my rights begin or where yours end. You can do whatever you want with your land, provided that it's within, you know, code, following all enforcement, without, I think the right word would be, without diminishing the life and the well-being of your neighbors. Whether it be like, you know, trees or landscaping, parking, building ADUs, things of that nature.
Thank you so much. That concludes my questions. Are there any questions from council?
Any questions?
Just looking at your application, oh, and good evening. My name's Gary Taylor. Brian, welcome. I'm just looking at this, and it kind of looks like you're applying for a full-time job. You understand this isn't a full-time job?
Oh, I absolutely understand that. No, no.
Just wanted to be sure.
Gotcha.
Okay. As far as your qualifications, they look pretty good on here and everything. What specifically interests you about the planning?
I'm, I really enjoy long-term planning. I really enjoy looking at very specific things and seeing how they play out in the long term. Coincidentally, also, like, well, not coincidentally, but I'm also really good at seeing the big picture, focusing on the little details and seeing how that impacts other little details within the picture. And that's why I think I'm very uniquely qualified for the Planning Commission position. I'm just, the word that I like is interconnectedness. How everything fits into one picture. Welcome.
Mr. Barker, is there any potential conflict of interest that might arise from if we were to appoint you into the Planning Commission?
But no conflict of interest.
Thank you. And also, you mentioned that you would want your community to be a lot more walkable?
Yes.
How do you see that happening? What's your vision for that area?
Repairing sidewalks. Increase bike lanes. Engineering, or, sorry, horticulture engineering applications along roadways to kind of create a safe barrier. There's a lot of, there's an increase of e-bikes and e-scooters. Those are sharing the walkways with individuals. That also presents a hazard. I think there needs to be a delineated space for bicycles, e-bikes, and scooters to just kind of create it around. Parking's not amazing in Stanton. So it'd be kind of good to say if you can take your scooter to a store and back, and you can be safe on the way there, people are more likely to use it.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Genesis Cardell to the podium. Good evening. So our first question to you is, can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a commissioner? And what personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected as a commissioner?
I would like to start with, good afternoon, everybody. I am currently pursuing a bachelor's degree at California State University in human services in order to go into the nonprofit field. I believe that this is a very legislation, and, you know, starting locally is a very important part of getting into that field and any field that serves the community. And I believe that as somebody who, I'm currently a part of the Stanton Community Foundation, and so I try to be involved in all aspects, whether it's talking to my neighbors about things that they see that need fixing or it's talking to, you know, people that are also currently volunteering within the city and seeing what they suggest the city needs improvement in. It's very important to, that, that we, you know, start locally and, and we kind of listen to our neighbors, especially as somebody who lives in apartments. I know that living in an apartment is vastly different from living in a house, whether it's by economic levels or, you know, just the fact that you're sharing a wall with your neighbor. So I, I feel that I bring a lot of new perspectives into whatever I come in, and I strive to be the person that brings those, those voices to whatever I am seeking to join. And yeah.
Thank you. Question number two. What do you see as a major community services issue to address in Stanton?
Well, I live around Long Cerritos, and right now, a lot of the concerns that I see amongst my neighbors are the homeless population. Especially, I live between Lexington and Bell, so there's a lot going on in the parking lot on Bell, and I see a lot of concern. And it's not, we don't view them as, we view them as people that need help, you know? And so I see a lot of that within the, the city council. I see that they're seeking to help the homeless population. And I feel that that's, for everybody living in Stanton, for everybody living in Southern California, that's a very important topic and that a lot of resources need to be going into that.
Thank you. And the last question from me is, if appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the commission achieve?
I would like to see a reformed approach towards the way that we treat the, once again, the homeless community and the way that we view the renters in the city. It's a, I know a lot of people, all of my neighbors are renters. All of the people that are living in the streets around me are renters. I feel that we make up a big percentage of, of the city's population. And so I would like people that maybe are not, don't usually come to, you know, city council meetings and community, community services meetings to speak up and use their voice in order to make their streets a safer place to be.
Thank you. That's all the questions from me. I'd like to now open it up to the city council. Any questions?
The Community Services Commission means a lot to me. I was on that for eight years, and I will say, without speaking at that podium, I hate doing it. I think all of us have been in that position. I believe Gary served in planning, and Mayor Protem, you served in public safety. And so we've all been in that position, standing at that microphone. So congratulations for getting up there and doing that. But my question to you is, what does Stanton mean to you?
It's my home. You know, I've lived here for twelve out of my eighteen years, and it's the place where I walk every, where I walk my dog every day and where I come home every day. And it, you know, it's home and safety. And I see every single person, whether they're just going through Stanton or they live here, as a part of our community. And so it's, you know, it's important to me that everybody be treated the way that they, that, you know, we strive as a city to be viewed by others.
Genesis, I see here from your application, you have past volunteering experiences from our events. But also here on your application, it says that you're an intern at the Unity Council in Oakland, California. Can you please explain to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I was an intern at the, at the Unity Council in, up in Oakland for two summers. And up in Oakland, as you know, there's a lot, a large homeless population also. So we worked with food drives and with other organizations throughout the city to address things such as pollution from, you know, trucks passing by or the problem with renters and leases. And we worked with a lot of different organizations that work with immigrants. If we, it's a very different environment over there. But it was a very valuable learning experience. I did a lot of clerical work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Our next person, at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Deborah Donovan to the podium, please. Hello, how are you?
Hello, terrific.
Good. So I have you, your first choice is being public safety, so I'm going to propose those questions to you at this time. Question number one is, can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a public safety committee member? What personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected to serve?
I just think it's a, it's a fit. It's a natural fit for me. I think I've had my whole adult academic and professional life was in service to protect and serve. I worked as a social worker. That was my call. And in that capacity, of course, they used to call us social control agents without guns. And we'd have to work with law enforcement in that capacity. And from that, I've also worked as, I've been credentialed with the Commission of Teachers, Teachers' Credentialing, and continue to work in that capacity and currently work for Long Beach Unified School District. I've also worked in, with education. I've been, worked at the Residential Treatment Centers. So I did, which is, golly, part of Starview, but it was Harborview. Harborview's no longer there. That was Long Beach. And then I've worked for Olive Crest in Orange County. And so I understand Orange Wood, and I just understand how those facilities operate, and I understand, you know, the court systems and the, and the children. And that's just, that's, that's, I feel like, are my qualifications. I have extensive trainings. I'm an older woman, so I'm, I'm thinking I'm at the stage of life, there's a, there's a person I study, Eric Erickson. And if I'm a social work major, right? And he talks about stages of development, and I think I'm at a place and where I do care about community, and I do have a responsibility at this point. And as much as, and I don't always like it, but I definitely know that I am compelled to step in where I think there's problems. I'm, I love God and country. I'm not happy with what's transpired. I think it's a business as usual. I don't like what happened with Andrew Doe, and I know his wife was at the helm of that and those kind of enablements, and I'm concerned. And I'm concerned at this level, and I want to come in and ensure that that's not how things are operating. I'm curious about how things are operating. I'm curious why this has been the red light district for fifty years and probably before that, from this area. So we've always known about Stanton. I just watched a Dateline that just talked to me, and then they were talking about, hey, if you want to go get drugs and prostitutes, come to Beach Boulevard. You know, that was just on Dateline. And I just have a concern, and I think that there is, that we can intervene on that. I want to find out what our limits and capabilities are and how we can generate some change. And I think I can, I think I can do that. I'm, I'm already involved with, you know, politics with other cities, and we've all talked about it, and they're, they're open to partnering with, you know, us. And it's like, we're, Orange County as a whole, we don't have to be compartmentalized and to try to, you know, generate some change and change the climate and change the culture. And I'm interested in seeing what I can do and what's going on exactly.
Thank you. Question number two. What public safety issues do you feel are most important to the residents and business owners of the Stanton community?
You know, I have to, I would like to explore that more. I've, I've been pretty fortunate here, so I would have to say that. Thank you to the sheriff, because this has had such a, Stanton has had this horrific reputation. I took, again, I grew up here, but not in Stanton, but... I could, again, I grew up here, but not in Stanton, but Cypress, you know, Pointe Park, Los Alamitos, and it was like, don't go to Stanton, you know? And I have to say, and I live right border on Cypress. So I think, um, and I feel like, um, enforcement's kept me pretty safe. I've never had anything happen to me, any major crimes. Um, I think I'd like to see definitely, I think it's the drug addiction and the, and the, um, which, you know, creates the prostitution and the homelessness. It's not, it's not, you know, hard and fast rule. I'm sure there's some anomalies and exceptions, but that's probably the majority of what's happening here. And, um, so just kind of targeting that, I don't think, I'm listening to about the homelessness. I, I'm concerned about maybe having a viable out. I really want to look at that. I, I also have, um, certificates in drug and alcohol, studies from Cypress College as well as counseling, and then I'm a social work major, um, from Cal State Long Beach, and then I have a master's in education. And in that capacity, though, with the, you know, drug and alcohol, I mean, sometimes this caliber of addiction really needs a viable out. And, and I think in the, in tho- those studies, and I think it rings true. It's not, again, this hard and fast rule, but those, that, that requires long term. I think there was a, I'm not, I think it was Phoenix House, I'm not sure if that's still there in Santa Ana. I think that was a big one. That is more of a long term, a viable out. Not like these, I'm not sure what's happening at the motel or what is going on. And I know some other, um, I don't know, so I don't think there is a lot of them. So when we're coming out there and doing all these outreach, I'm concerned about, wait, wait, is there a viable out? Like, you can go talk to them all day and, you know, throw all this money. And I think bef, I, I remember hearing Andrew Doe saying there was 119 mental health, you know, nonprofits, whatever, that all this money is getting thrown out, and there's no viable out. And then there's a 10 to 15 year waiting list for HUD. So when we, when we get them places, and I don't know enough about it, I am a novice, so I do want to, I am concerned, though. I mean, I'm in a position that I can look at this. I'm curious. Why is that? So when we get them, where are they going to go, and how are they going to pay for it? And what are their, what's the treatment? What's going on? And I, and I know that that stuff, that can work. And I'm just curious what's out there and what we can develop, what the planning commission can develop as far as that goes. But that's what I'm, I'm looking at.
Thank you. Question number three is, what recommendations do you have related to public safety that would improve the quality of life for residents and members of the business community? I kind of think you touched on that a little bit, but if you wanted to add to that?
Um, like I said, I guess, uh, some, some viable outreach. I have a lot of experience, um, as a social worker. And, 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 and I think my forte, and, and I want people to make decisions. I'm not about, you know, taking people's rights away, and I want to make sure, um, that's, I think I wrote that, that that's happening, that people are just, you know, strip people of their rights without due process and things of that nature, but I want people to make decisions. And I think one of my fortes was being able to get a mom, a drug addicted mom, into treatment and making that choice and not having it be, you know, you have, but you have to make it viable. You have to speak to, you know, have to know how to speak, I, I think. Oh.
Thank you. At this time, do you have any questions for Ms. Donovan?
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I, I do want to congratulate you on just being aware of some of the aspects that are happening regionally. Uh, one thing you'll find, whether being a commissioner or joining a city council, is you come in with a lot of questions, and sometimes you get answers that are maybe not exactly what you're hoping for. But, yeah, the, everything is trying to work towards solutions at least. But, um, you know, I'm aware of Stanton's reputation, you know, I think all of us are. But to that same extent, you know, you chose to live here, and so I'll ask the same question. What does Stanton mean to you?
I, I want it to mean something. I mean, I think I'm here because I want it to mean something to me. I want to have that pride. And I think, you know, unless I'm in a position to generate that kind of change, it, it's really hard for me, to be candid with you. I think I was talking to her, I, I love, I'm very fortunate. I'm right here at the border of Cypress. Like I said, my neighbor, I was telling her, my neighbor works for the Signal Hill Police Department. My other neighbor, a long time, you know, they, her husband's at the National Guard, and we, and we just have a great tribe there, and we've brought up our children. And it's been such a, a great experience for us. But Stanton as a whole, I just, it, you want it to be inviting. You want it to be a place of excellence. People will drive anywhere and do anything for excellence. I drive, my son goes to half an hour away to school, to a private school, because I will drive there because that's what I'm going to do. That's going to be the best interest for my child or even where I spend my time. And it's like, we have to develop some kind of climate and culture that's inviting to some degree. And I, I was explaining, like, it's beautiful. You come off the 605, I mean, I'm just going to be candid, and it's beautiful, beautiful, you know, Cypress has really, you know, done some great work as far as development. And, um, it's all, you know, commercial, and then you hit, you know, not. And from here on, it's just like this dingy, dark, you know, it's, it's unpleasant, and it's such a missed opportunity because you're driving, you know, to the convention center. You're driving to Disneyland. I mean, you could really do something here. People can come through and stop at some cute shop or do something. And we really need to, you know, be about something, whether it be a community of family, whether it's going to be a cute, you know, chic area, or maybe a little bit of everything, but it has to be something. And right now, it's just, you know, the red light district, you know, of Orange County. It's ridiculous. It needs to change. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. And that's what I have to say about that. Sorry.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Thomas Frazier to the podium, please. Hello, good evening.
Ms. Vazquez.
So Mr. Frazier has also selected the planning commissioner as his first option, so I proceed with the questions for such. Can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in reapplying? And what personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be reselected?
First, thank you for this opportunity and time, Mr. Honorable Protem, council members, city attorney, and staff. I have served as a planning commissioner through multiple changes in the city. I have been chairman of the planning commission multiple times. I have lived in the city. Uh, the wife and I purchased our home, uh, in February of 1974. Raised my children here. I have watched the city go from a sleepy community to a new, vibrant, uh, town. I have built buildings in multiple countries, working with diverse ethnicities and generally being the only American there to develop sites. I have worked in the construction industry from, I believe, 1971 until I retired in 2019.
Question number two is, what do you see are the challenges and opportunities in the city's future in the next year, as well as the next five to 10 years relating to the planning commission?
Challenges, as we know, are, are mandates and directions from the state, which takes the city's ability to define what they really need to do or would like to do away from them. Parking is an issue, and as a city, you have relatively little control over it. Opportunities are right here on the corner of Beach and Cotella. Some type of new dynamic development in there. And then over in the Pacific area, there are changes that need to be made and redevelopment that needs to be done. I do believe that the, uh, the ADU units will be something that the city will have to contend with and deal with, with the mandates that are coming from the state. There, there are a lot of good things we can do. But one thing I would like for the city to do, and I've been an advocate of this for numerous, numerous years, is architectural development standards. Committed to certain areas, certain standards, development guidelines. Uh, I would like to see that.
Last question for me is, how will you approach the work of balancing the property rights of a project owner and developer and the adjacent neighbors?
The planning commissioners are confined by rules, codes, and development standards that sometimes are, are, are set and brought forward from the city, along with guidelines from the state. If a project meets all of the development criteria, it is very, very difficult to not go along with that project. You can understand that parking, travel, uh, public safety, amenities, and, uh, handicap requirements, and public safety are, are issues that you, that you have to deal with. But a lot of this is mandated from, from the state, and if they meet all of the criteria, you pretty much have to say yes. And even though, uh, adjacent neighborhoods do not like the development, and I can cite the one right there on Western, uh, across from the park, there are really minimal things that you can do. You can't appease everybody every time.
Thank you, sir. That's the final questions from staff. Any questions from council?
I have one. Um, you said that you're, uh, you've already served how many terms on the planning commission?
Oh, my goodness. I, I, I could not tell you. Uh,
Is one of the projects that you've, what is one of the projects that you've seen that's close to your heart?
Oh, uh, the, you're going to ask me the name of it, and it's so long ago, I, I, I don't remember, but it's, it's where all the Paseos are. Pardon?
Rodeo 39, the verb?
The, the, that's okay, but I, I'm more, uh, aesthetic design and community development. Rodeo 39 is great for people to come and, and be entertained and, and have a good time. But it would be on the, I guess that's the east side of Beach, between Orange Wood and coming up our direction, there are multiple townhouses and communities in there. And, and personally, I think architecturally, it's a beautiful development. Uh, it, and it took a lot of work. But it's well worth it. It's well worth it. It's beautiful, and people live there, and they're quite happy. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
I worked with, uh, Thomas on the planning commission for a few months before I, uh, was elected to council, so we know each other. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vazquez.
And then I just want to call out this applicant, just to confirm, um, if they are in attendance or not. Ms. Christine Garcia? So our next applicant this evening, I'd like to call Ms. Debbie Grand to the podium, please.
Let's see if I can reach her. Okay?
So I have your option down as a public safety committee. So my question for you, uh, at one out of three, is, can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a public safety committee member? And what personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected to serve?
Well, I come back in April, have lived here for 35 years. I've been a Stanton Parks and Recreation Commissioner, a Stanton Planning Commissioner. I've been a s, the, an original board member of the Stanton Community Foundation, and I was a VIP Volunteers in Policing at the Stanton Sheriff's Station during the recession. I attended and completed the Stanton Community, um, Stanton Citizens Academy twice, the, uh, Orange County Sheriff's Department Citizens Academy, and the Stanton Green Planning Academy. I've been on three ride-alongs with the Sheriff's Department and a ride-along with our Public Safety Services Director. I would like to be on the committee because I've been a longtime resident. I care about my city. I've had a lot of experience in volunteering and learning about our Sta, City of Stanton's public safety issues, including I attended the town hall meeting on, uh, May 29th last year. I've, I've had security training. I had a guard card, California Guard Card for many years. And I know Stanton very well, and I do care about and have been concerned about our, the safety of our residents, businesses, business customers, and our visitors.
Thank you. Question number two. What public safety issues do you feel are most important to the residents and business owners of Stanton?
Well, okay, we're along a state highway, which some people don't, out of our city, don't understand. And we're in a tourist area. And because of that, yes, there are a lot of prostitutes. There's the fentanyl users and the other drug users, the drug dealers. And there's just things that they don't understand that I know our Sheriff's Department has been dealing with for many years. And thanks to SB 357, loitering is allowed everywhere. And we're, by, I guess, a state highway, it's public. In a private residential area, you don't, like, there are, are state legislature, you don't see those things going on. So I, I care about getting as much under the, of that under control as possible.
Thank you. My last question for you is, what recommendations do you have related to public safety that would improve the quali, quality of life for residents and business community?
I think if we're allowed to offer services, if we can, I know services are offered and turned down, and there is a lot of mental illness going on. I did have psych nursing, so I do understand all that. I just think we have to kind of take each situation as it comes up. It, I didn't realize when I saw people laying along Beach Boulevard that are fentanyl users. They need help. So whatever we can do to provide help, to allow the sheriffs to do what they can do, because I know about their training, and it's awesome. Anything we can do to help, and it probably would place us to live. It's, there's a lot of things that, um, we have the opportunity to help.
Thank you. That concludes questions for me. Counsel?
So I'll just ask the question I keep asking. What does Stanton mean to you?
Well, like I say, I've lived here for, going on 35 years, and it's home. And when, it's like I have parents who were very community oriented people, and they were always involved in our, my brothers in our activities. And then after we grew up, they became involved with their city of Torrance. And it's just kind of in my blood, I think, to be, to care about and be as involved as I can and help wherever I can. So, and I, I mean, I'm, I'm also on the board of my homeowners association. And, you know, that's a little community, a gated community. But we're, we're getting things taken care of so that we have very pretty happy residents. And why don't we have happy citizens, happy residents of our city, and business owners and business customers again, and, and visitors?
Hi, Debbie.
Hi, Gary.
I've known Debbie since 2012, when we both were on the planning commission, I believe. We both got appointed about the same time. And I don't have an opening on the planning commission this time. Mrs. Ash is still on there since I have two more years to go. But if either of you guys or the mayor and need a, a good planning commissioner or any commissioner, I would heartily recommend Debbie.
Thank you so much. I, I, like I say, it came, it's in my blood. My parents would be thrilled. I mean, they were thrilled, everything that I got to do. You know, I'm a brill, I'm a Parks and Rec Commissioner. My parents were so happy and pleased because they were really involved in their city as well. So it's just, I care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grand. And I just want to verify in case someone came in. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Viniana Guttenbeil. Ms. Viniana Guttenbeal. Okay. Our next person is, I'd like to invite Ms. Liliana Leon. I know she was here. We may come back to her if that's okay to counsel. Next, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Douglas McKino.
I have a prepared statement, if council's okay with that.
Okay with you, Mr. Mayor Protem? Yes, please proceed, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council and city staff. I'd like to begin by thanking former council member Carol Warren for the opportunity to have served these past four years on the Public Safety Committee. Director Wren, thank you for the work you and your staff do day in and day out. And please also extend my gratitude to the team that handles the graffiti and the debris cleanup throughout the city. They're a big reason why Stanton looks as good as it does. To my fellow committee members, Sandra, Kenneth, Daniel, and Wendy, this has been the best group we've had in years. I appreciate your service. So why do I want to come back? What do I have to offer? Experience. I'm the only continuous member remaining from when the committee was reformed about five years ago. That accumulated knowledge and experience is valuable, especially to new members. As they've been appointed over the years, I have made sure to get them up to speed with the necessary information on how the city operates, along with any relevant committee precedent. I want to continue to provide my experience to this committee. Technology. Stanton continues to invest and rely on technology to enhance public safety. It's critical that we have an understanding of how it works, what its limitations are, and what risks are involved. I have years of experience working in the field of surveillance tech. I understand how it works, how to use it effectively, and care deeply about making sure it's used responsibly. Commitment. You'll have noticed I don't have a second choice for commission on my application. Over the years, people have asked me if I'm going to try for a more important or significant commission, and I've always said no. My heart is in public safety. I feel like that's where I can do the most good, and that's where I'm most needed. Let's talk about the future. I'd like to thank council member Warren for bringing up the topic of roles, responsibilities, and the output of the Public Safety Committee back in January. It's true, we haven't had much output. We have our quarterly meetings, we have our discussions, we give our input, but we haven't necessarily delivered anything tangible directly to the council. As the committee sits currently, these have been the expectations set by the council, and we've met them. I want to change those expectations. I've talked to most of the council, and it feels like there's a common desire to do something different here. Now, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, where I have Public Safety Committee suddenly meeting twice a month or just doing busy work. I want to work with the council and Director Wren to find a suitable path that is moving us towards more impactful work. One of my biggest concerns is the disillusionment of people that volunteer in Stanton. We don't have the best civic engagement, and the last thing I want is for someone to answer the call, commit themselves, but walk away feeling like it didn't matter. We're not going to get a second chance with that person. Few items that I see in the near future for the Public Safety Committee to work on. Of course, we always have our top priorities homelessness, prostitution, and violent crime. Those are a mainstay as concerns for our community. Next, safe streets together. It'll soon be one year since we started the campaign, and I'm sure we've been assessing the efficacy of it along the way, and will soon be making decisions on how to allocate funding moving forward. I'd like the Public Safety Committee to be a part of that discussion. Second, along with my fellow Public Safety Committee members, I've worked on creating a surveillance oversight ordinance that seeks to improve our approval and reporting processes for surveillance technology. I'd like the Public Safety Committee to review this ordinance at its first meeting in April. In conclusion, I want to try and continue to make Stanton a better place for everyone. I can see a path forward for a revitalized and more impactful committee, and I want to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from council for Mr. McKino?
Any questions?
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Amy McBride to the podium.
Hi. I don't have a statement.
So I see that your first choice is Community Services Commission?
Correct.
So at this time, I'm going to proceed with the questions that we have for the Community Services Commission at this time. Question number one is can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a commissioner, and what personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected?
Okay, perfect. So I too was part of the Citizens Academy last spring, which manager Hannah and some of the council members had been trying to encourage me to participate and move further with the city. And we had a neighborhood watch meeting a couple weeks ago, and council member Warren was there, and we talked for a while, and he pretty much convinced me to go ahead and move forward and see, you know, anyway. So I worked with the City of Westminster Community Services and Recreation Department for about seven years. I managed their aquatics program, and I was a recreation coordinator there. So my experience with that is from there. I have a business with the City of Stanton. I run a private swim and sports program, so I have experience with recreation, all that, on my own. I mean, I don't know. I could go on, but I don't.
Up to you. But I can proceed with question two.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Question two, what do you see are the challenges and opportunities in the city's future? Excuse me, that's for planning.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm going to restart. Question two, what do you see as a major community services issue to address in Stanton?
Major, I'm not sure. I would say we need more community engagement. Like I said, I ran our neighborhood watch meeting because we live, my husband and I have lived here for about 12 years, and he's been on the Board of Directors for our HOA for the last 11 or 12. And I've been trying to get more engagement with our neighbors, and it's taken us 12 years to really get to know a lot of them. And we were able to get about 40 people to come out, which I have never seen those many neighbors at all in one place at one time. And I think it's important to be able to have community programs and activities and things to engage more of our community. We have participated, my husband and myself have participated in the city's annual Halloween festivals and a couple other programs that they've had. And I just think more engagement is needed. I know there's a lot of stuff for seniors and a lot of stuff for families, but not necessarily for the younger crowds, 20-somethings or young couples. There doesn't seem to be a lot of that. And I know you guys have a lot of properties coming in over down at the VRV and the other new property, which is going to bring in a lot of younger crowd. So I think we, I would like to see more activities for them to participate in as well. I'll just leave it there.
Great. And my final question to you is if appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the commission achieve? I think you kind of touched base on that.
Yeah. I guess more engagement, just more engagement from the community. The City of Stanton, we've lived here for 12 years. Prior to that, I lived in the City of Westminster my entire life, so I just moved a city over. And being three square miles, it's a small city, and I feel like the engagement, even some of the things that you guys do, we could bring a lot more people there. And the more people that connect, the safer our cities are, so then that would help with public safety. The more people who know each other and the more people that connect, the safer we are together. So I think we need to do something to bring more people out, to get them to participate in different activities that we can offer. You know, like I said, the Halloween thing, super fun. You guys do activities for everybody, even having the dog contest. I brought our dog because, hey, we don't have kids, but we have dogs. Not everybody has children. And it's nice to have something for everybody to be able to do, to be able to participate. Again, engagement is kind of my thing.
Thank you. That concludes questions for me. Counsel? Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Melissa Mesa Salonia. Hello. So I see that your first option is the planning commission, so I'm going to begin with those questions for you this evening.
Okay.
So question number one is can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a planning commissioner, and what personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected to serve?
I want to be a planning commissioner because I live in spreadsheets and policies. I work for the federal government and the VA, and I work in clinical documentation and policy writing. And so that's just kind of something I, it's my wheelhouse. I'm kind of nerdy like that. And what was the second part? What qualifies me?
Qualifications and/or skills that you would have.
Oh, working in government, I know how long things take to change, and I know how many steps you have to go through to get things to change. I think I bring an interesting perspective because I've lived here since 1996 when my babies were small. And I've, we've done a lot of, I live behind the KP Homes, so we've done a lot of stuff with planning commission and council, and I went through a lot of communication with the city about, the planning commission especially, and the city about that whole project and what our rights were and what the KP Homes' rights were. And it was my first introduction to doing anything like this, and it kind of like sparked my interest a little bit. And I think I'm a person that can meet people where they are and talk with people and figure out what the real needs are and how to best approach some things for everybody. So it's not just my way, my perspective. It's a perspective of all the citizens of Stanton.
Thank you. Question number two is what do you see that are the challenges and opportunities in the city's future in the next year, as well as the next five to 10 years?
Parking, parking, parking. Development, and like it's been said here, community engagement. I think that people want to be engaged. I don't know if it's not in their timeframe or if they're busy, but I just don't think that the outreach hits them. I don't know if it's the method I'll leave of communication, if it's that we don't do text. I don't know what it is, but I think community engagement, parking is like the biggest issue I hear everywhere when I talk to people. There's never enough parking by anybody, ever, and even anywhere you go. And so that's, to me, is like one of the biggest, not that I can solve that problem, or Stanton can solve that problem, but that's what I hear everywhere I go. And the affordability of living in Stanton. So, and I don't know that that's a community issue, a planning commission problem, but that's what I see in Stanton. And for a future, I'd like to see like more walkability, more bike lanes, more beautification of the city. And I don't mean like, the gentleman was talking about architecture, which is spot on. That's something I had actually thought about, but just the ability to have like a nice areas to go to. Like, our parking lots look bad, or, you know, just get improvements for some different businesses to improve themselves.
Thank you. And my final question for me is how will you approach the work of balancing the property rights of a project owner and developer and the adjacent neighbor?
Yeah, that's hard because our hands are tied. We don't really have a lot of leeway with what the, like the gentleman said, like what the mandates are from the state. And so unfortunately, we have to do what some of the developers desire, whether we like it or not. But I do think we need to listen to our community and listen to them and see if we can find an avenue that works for everybody, something that works for all of us. Because we can have developers in here and make something nice, but we don't want to, we want to make it so that the people that already live here want to stay living here, and their kids want to live here, and they can live here. We don't want to just build something new and have, I mean, not that we don't want to welcome new people, of course we do, but we also want to make sure that we retain community by having our cousins, our aunts, our uncles live within the communities or surrounding communities so that we can have a nice, prideful city. And so working with the developers is a little bit tricky, and I think that is a forte of a very good talker and someone who can really negotiate that. But you have to really listen to the community and try and find a good balance. There has to be negotiations both ways. But we do have a lot of mandates from the state that they are what they are, and it just rolls slow sometimes to get things done.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That concludes, no, that's right. That concludes questions from staff.
Okay.
Counsel?
Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Only that I really do like our community. I think we have the best neighbors. I have the best street. I really do enjoy living in the city. I just want to be some kind of assistance to make it, to do my part of the community. That's all. Anything else? We're good?
I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Time. And then just to confirm, if someone had walked in after, Mr. Johnny Muriel? Johnny? At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Dwayne Norman to the podium, please. Hello, sir. So I just wanted to confirm with you, I have community services as your initial option. Is that what you would like to continue, or would you like the community services to be your first option, or planning commission to be your first option?
Let's change it to planning commission.
So Mr. Norman would like to change his first choice to be planning commission, his second choice to be community services commission, and his third choice to be public safety. Thank you, sir. So I'm going to proceed with the planning commission questions this evening. Can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a planning commissioner, and what personal qualifications and/or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected?
Sure. Good question. I have been serving in the city as a Parks and Recs Commissioner or Community Services Commissioner for the last a little over five years. And I've seen a lot of different things and, you know, the aspects of working with the city and the different staff and the council. And I think planning commission is the next step on learning more. I've been through three different citizens academies here, been volunteering in many different things. So planning commission is something to me that's very important. I did a little research on what a planning commissioner does and versus what the City of Stanton Planning Commissioners does. So we work with a general plan. We implement that general plan. We get public engagement. We coordinate, and we are an advisory, you know, level board. So basically the same things as a community services commission. But for me, I think I have that qualification due to the different citizens academies I've done, already being on the, the community services commission for a while, and engagement with you and learning more about it, and the research that I've done as well.
Thank you. Question number two, what do you see are the challenges and opportunities in the city's future in the next year, as well as the next five to 10 years related to the planning commission?
Development. So it's been brought up about parking, and that's definitely a big thing there. But the way that we envision the development of the city, we've got a small city, and we want to keep it going. We want to develop more and more areas. We have a lot of empty areas on Beach Boulevard, different, you know, Beach and Cotella, somebody brought up, yeah, Orco Block area, you know, there's opportunity there. We go down to Main Street. We've got a lot of work that we can do over there. We've got, you know, the Sam's Club parking lot that's sitting there vacant for all these years. So we want to develop this, but we want to be smart about it, too, because bringing in more business obviously is a great thing, but we also have the neighborhoods that are popping up, not just out. And we've got to think about the parking and, you know, the drivability of Stanton. It's already a hectic situation when you come off of, you know, the 22 freeway, coming up into our city. We've got to think about that. I've sat at the traffic light on Beach and Cotella, three light turns to get, you know, to come over here. It takes 15 minutes to come from my house when I live, you know, I could walk over here if my bridge was open in about two minutes. So, you know, these are things that we need to look at, you know. So long-term plan, develop, develop, bring in business, but do it the right way and think about those challenges that we've got to take into consideration.
Thank you. Last question from staff is how will you approach the work of balancing the property rights of a project owner and developer and the adjacent neighbors?
Well, again, that goes back to the general plan from the city, but we also get some of those laws and stuff from the state. So they already said it a couple of times. It's a difficult situation, but I think community engagement, you know, educating the community, getting them involved, letting them know, you know, these are state laws, these are our general plan, maybe the planning commission can sit there and discuss some of the plan that's in there and maybe revise it, things like that. So, yeah.
Wonderful, thank you. That concludes staff's questions. Question from council?
So what does, what does Stanton mean to you?
You know what, John, you know, that's a good question. Stanton means this to me. I was six years old when we moved here in the city of Stanton. I am 56 years old right now. I've been living here since 1975. Okay? I grew up in the house that I ended up buying after my parents passed away. So I love this community. I love everything about it. I remember when this area here used to be our haunted house, you know, for Halloween and stuff. So everything about this city, the hospital that used to be right over here, I went to it many times, got injured too many times. But, you know, I, I've seen this city go from its own police department, you know, where you knew all the police officers, small businesses and stuff, they always knew you, you were walking to school or something and they were like, hey, Dwayne, how you doing? You know, the neighborhood. It hasn't changed that much. It's still a small community. People know you. I love this community. It means so much to me. If I was a multimillionaire, I'd still stay in Stanton.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Hearing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to invite discussion regarding Mr. Martin Ross. Due to conflict in scheduling with Mr. Ross, he has submitted a letter in lieu of an in-person interview, which was provided to you via email and is also available for your review on the dais before you. So at this time, if you'd like to proceed to the next one, I can, Mr. Mayor Potem? Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Marlon Ray Velasco to the podium, please. Oh, thank you. Please don't leave.
We'll have to take a short recess.
Okay. So at this time, are you just going to take a short recess? I do thank you guys for your time. So probably about five, 10 minutes. So just please have a seat and we'll call you right back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. So due to, you typically, we have five, we have some excuse absences, so to maintain a quorum, there has to be three or more. So if one steps away, then we need to go for a recess and there was only two. So rush rooms are down the hall to your right and we'll make sure we won't start until everyone's back. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Mayor Potem, if you can go ahead and reconvene the meeting?
It is 7:52 and we are back from recess. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Marlon, for your patience.
Sure.
So, oh, perfect. Can I test that mic one more time, please?
Uh, test, test.
Great. Okay. So I see that your first option is for the community services commission. So I'm going to proceed with those questions for you at this time. Make sure everything's looking good. Okay. So question one is can you please start by briefly telling the city council why you're interested in becoming a commissioner? And what personal qualifications and or skills do you have that will be of value should you be selected to serve?
Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity to interview for this commission. So I'd like to serve on this commission because I have a strong passion for public service and advocating for the community. As a public health professional, I'm a strong advocate for improving health in areas that we live and work. In my professional life, I am able to fulfill this passion as I currently work for the Orange County Healthcare Agency as a program supervisor, ensuring people currently living with HIV and I had, and high risk for HIV, have access to needed healthcare and support services. With that being said, I would be honored to serve on this city, commissioner, to fulfill this passion I have for public service and advocating for that community in my personal life by helping improve Stanton residents' health and wellbeing and quality of life by improving access to and quality of services available in the community. In terms of my qualifications, I believe I will bring to the commission a wealth of knowledge, education and work experience. I hold a master's of public health and currently pursuing a doctor in public health with over 10 years of experience in administrative roles where I've been involved in supervision, decision-making, program planning and budget planning. In my current role, as I mentioned, working for the health department, I'm a program supervisor and oversee over 30 million state and federal grants to provide needed HIV and support services for people living with HIV in Orange County. Furthermore, in my role, oh, I'm sorry, and additionally, as part of this role, I also help lead the Orange County HIV Planning Council. This is a federally mandated planning body that plans and allocates funding for needed HIV services in the community. As this planning body is a board of supervisors appointed planning body, we run the planning body in accordance with the Brown Act and Roberts Rules of Order. So I'm very familiar with how public meetings such as city council meetings are conducted. Lastly, I currently serve as the vice president for my homeowners association. In this position, I have gained valuable experience listening to my residents' concerns, advocating for their needs. Examples of my work include conducting a town hall meeting, gathering resident feedback on a popular topic, parking that many have mentioned in this interview process, and ultimately creating a subcommittee, parking committee, to help propose changes for revisions to parking rules that better suits our residents for board consideration. Lastly, I listened to my residents and the main concern of not wanting their HOA fees increased, so I conducted a budget analysis to move allocations around to ensure that HOA fees remain the same for an additional year. Thank you.
So question number two, if you feel that you haven't covered it, is what do you see as a major community services issue to address in Stanton?
Sure. I think one of the major community service issues, I think Stanton delivers a lot of great community services to the community, education classes. As again, as a public health professional, I think I would really want to see more health and wellness being offered as community classes because, you know, this health and promotion really increases longevity of life and decreases the likelihood of chronic conditions. And so classes such as, you know, cooking classes, such as injury prevention, such as smoking sensation, those public health activities are very important and crucial for prevention and it really helps people just live longer and healthier lives.
Thank you. Final question from staff is if appointed, what specific goals would you like to see the commission achieve?
Yeah, kind of going back to question two, I really like to see increased health and wellness. So again, I think, you know, as a public health professional, I've seen a lot of, you know, again, prevention, health prevention, education, mental health, maybe offering some, you know, free mental health, you know, classes for those in the community. And so I think I really want to see an expansion. I think Stanton's already doing a great job in providing those classes, but I think definitely we can expand and do more and offer more public health classes and activities.
Great, thank you. That concludes staff's questions. Any questions from council? Thank you so much for your time, sir. So at this time, I'd like to give another opportunity for Liliana Leon. Okay. Mr. Mayor Potem, that concludes the interview portion of the appointment process. And if okay, I will now proceed with the nomination portion of the process at this time. All right. So at this time, I'm going to begin with the planning commission. And we will go in order of, since we did the interview process in alphabetical order by last name and since we are limited and it kind of changes, instead of seat number, we're going to go by alphabetical by last name now, just to kind of keep consistency. So planning commission appointments, our first person would be council member Barrios. I do have his appointments ready. And at this time, Mr. Barrios, his first selection for council, or for planning commission would be Mr. Dwayne Norman. So with that being said, is there a motion for Mr. Norman to serve? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Norman, you'll be serving under Mr. Barrios as the planning commission seat. Okay. And then the next item is council member Torres. Your appointee for planning commission, sir.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Melissa Meza Saldana.
Okay. And that's a motion by Mr. Torres, is that your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing, any opposed? Excuse me. Hearing none, council, or congratulations, Ms. Saldana, your, Mr. Torres' appointment for the planning commission. And our third one is for council member Warren. Your nomination, sir.
To retain Thomas Frazier.
Okay. And that's your motion, sir?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the final seat is for Mr. Frazier to serve as planning commissioner, to be reappointed. Okay. Thank you. And for the next item we're going to move on is for the community services commission. This is appointment to fill four seats. The first appointment is to Mr. Barrios and he has his first choice as Ms. Genesis Cardell. Excuse me, I'm a little bit slow, please excuse me.
Community services.
Community services. So we're moving on to, yes, previously known as planning, our Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission.
Please repeat the last nomination really quick.
For planning commission? Okay. So Mr. Mayor Potem has asked that I rename the seated members to the planning commission. So for the planning commission, we have Mr. Dwayne Norman, Ms., I want to get her whole name right, Ms. Melissa Meza Saldana, and Mr. Thomas Frazier.
And for the community services, what was the one by?
So for community services commission, our first appointee is by Mr. Barrios, would be Genesis Cardell.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
First.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations, Ms. Cardell. Next item is council member Taylor, your appointee, sir.
Marlon Ray Velasco.
Marlon? Is that your motion, sir?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, sir, you're appointed to the community services commission. Our next item is for council, or Mayor Potem Torres. Not a problem. It gives me time as well.
My nomination's up, Dave.
Do you mind if you just get me in the law?
Absolutely. Council member Warren, are you ready to appoint?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Amy McBride.
Amy McBride?
Yep.
Community services.
Community services. Council member Warren has selected Ms. Amy McBride to serve in his seat. That is a motion from council member Warren, correct? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, Ms. McBride, you will now be serving on the community services commission. And then we have one more for Mr. Torres when you are ready, sir.
Yes. I'm looking at the second choices now. Deborah Donovan would like to be on the community services commission.
That is a second choice for her? Ms. Donovan, or, excuse me, Donovan, is that an option that you're willing to consider? I know it's not your first choice. Okay. So if you were to be appointed this evening, would you be acceptable to that? Yes? Okay.
Do you want more? That has put community services in their, in their first pick. Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Like to be on the community services department?
Mr. Barker, is that something you would be willing to consider to serve on the community services commission, sir? Yes?
Then that would be my nomination. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with me.
So, Mr. Barker, if you're acceptable, you have been chosen to, selected to serve on the community services commission. Yes? Thank you, sir. So that concludes the nomination and appointment process for the community services commission. So at this time, I have Genesis Cardell.
Yeah, oh, we need it first and a second.
Oh, thank you so much.
First.
So, Mr. Torres, do you have a motion for that nomination? Mr. Torres? Oh. So a lot of moving parts this evening. Do we have a second? Warren, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. Again, that concludes the nomination and appointment process for the community services commission. We have Genesis Cardell, Mr. Marlon Ray Velasco, Brian Barker and Amy McBride. I will now move on to the public safety committee. So our first seat was for Mr. Barrios and he selected Mr. Martin Ross to serve. Can I get a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Warren? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Mr. Ross is set to serve on the public safety committee and council member Taylor.
Debbie Grant.
Okay, that's your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations, Mrs. Grant. And our third would be for council member Warren.
Douglas McKino.
Okay. And that's your motion, sir?
Yep.
Do we have a second for Douglas McKino?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That concludes the selection process for public safety committee. We have Mr. Martin Ross, Debbie Grant and Mr. Douglas McKino to serve on the public safety committee. That concludes the interview and application appointment this evening. Before I hand over the microphone to Mayor Potem Torres, I would like to say thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you guys coming out and applying and your commitment to wanting to serve the city of Stanton. We do have other options for you to assist with the city. And again, please take a look, in 2026, we'll have some new, new seats to be open and we encourage you to reapply and re-attend.
Thank you, Patricia. I just want to say I'm very happy to see so many residents that are very passionate about their city and I feel like everybody here is at least involved in some capacity here at Stanton. So I want to see your guys' faces more, please. Please join city council meetings, as you know. It starts with us, you know what I mean, one by one. So I would like to see a lot of the same people's faces here next time. Great, so moving on, item number seven, public hearings, we have none. Item number eight, unfinished business, we have none. Item number nine, new business, 9A, city council consideration for, or, whoops.
Sorry, you caught, I, I wasn't able to break you. We have completed 9A, Mr. Mayor Potem.
Oh, we're 9B, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
Not again.
Item 9B, authorized
Sorry, you caught, I wasn't able to break you up. We have completed 9A, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Oh, we're 9B, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry. Item 9B, authorization for council members to attend upcoming meetings and events pursuant to the City of Stanton travel and reimbursement policy. A council member must receive City Council approval prior to a trip if the trip will exceed $500.
Yes, sir.
Council will consider the following requests for travel, sorry.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor Protem has gone through the report, so once again, this is authorization for a council member to attend an upcoming meeting and event, and if a trip does exceed $500, council will need to consider the request for travel. So presented this evening for City Council consideration is a request for travel for Mayor Chauver and Councilmember Barrios to attend the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG, 2025 Regional Conference and General Assembly. This is scheduled to be held in Palm Desert, California, from May 1st to May 2nd. The recommended action for this evening is that the City Council find this item not subject to CEQA, authorize the attendance of Mayor and Councilmember Barrios at the proposed meeting as desired by staff, excuse me, as desired and authorize staff to make a budget adjustment as needed to cover any travel costs. That concludes staff's report. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item passes 3-0. And moving on to item number 10, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Oral Communications, Public. At this time, members of the public may address the City Council Successor Agency/Stanton Housing Authority regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council Successor Agency/Stanton Housing Authority, provided that no action may be taken on non-agenda items.
At this time, I have not received any written communication or request to speak, Mr. Mayor Protem. Are there any members in the audience that wish to speak on any item on the agenda or any other subject matter at this time? Hearing none, seeing none, sir? Moving on to item 11.
Communications, none. 12, Mayor Chairman, Council Agency Authority Initiated Business. 12A, Committee Reports, Council Agency Authority Announcements.
Just wanted to recognize the opening of the new playground at the Stand FRC, and thank Supervisor Shafie's office for his involvement in getting us funding for that. Great work to our Community Services staff in getting it open.
Wonderful, thank you. Item 12B, Council Agency Authority Initiated Items for a Future Meeting. Next one, 12C, Council Agency Authority Initiated Items for a Future Study Session. Item 13, Items from City Attorney, Agency Council, and Authority Council.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members, I have no items tonight.
Thank you. 14, Items from City Manager, Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and council, there are no items from City Manager at this time.
Finally, we have 14A, Orange County Fire Authority. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem, City Council Members, City Staff. It's my pleasure to provide you with the OCFA Operational Report for February 2025. The OCFA responded to a total of 344 incidents within the city during the month of February 2025. It included seven fires, 242 medical aids, 12 traffic accidents, two calls for hazardous conditions, and 81 miscellaneous calls, for a total of 344. There was a total of two significant events in the City of Stanton over the last month. One of them occurred on Pacific Avenue on February 4th, 2025, at approximately 020 hours. Our ECC received reports of flames coming from a bedroom and launched a structural fire response. Engine 46 arrived on scene of a single-story fourplex with heavy smoke and fire showing. They established Pacific Command and balanced to work in structural fire. Battalion 8 assumed command at 36 hours. Engine 46 crew quickly deployed hose lines, initiated an aggressive fire attack, while concurrently coordinating with responding units to obtain a primary and secondary clear. Engine 46 advised they had knockdown at 00:47 hours. I'm happy to say there was no civilian or firefighter casualties that occurred during this incident. Assisting agencies were the Orange County Sheriff's, Edison, SoCal, and Stanton Building officials. And then on February 27th, 2025, at 785, or, excuse me, 7850 Cattella Avenue in Stanton, at approximately 08:58 hours, a commercial structural fire assignment was sent to the public library based on open, or, report of flames seen at the library. Engine 46 arrived on scene, reported a fire in the attic, and assumed Cattella Command. Engine 46 upgraded this to working structure assignment, and quickly deployed hose lines and worked with truck companies to open up the roof and extinguish the fire inside of the attic. The crews opened up the roof and got a primary clear, and knockdown was declared a couple minutes after arrival. Assisting agencies were Anaheim Fire Department, Orange County Sheriff's, and then the Orange County Building Department. February safety messages involved practicing home safety, developing a home escape plan, and burn safety. We posted multiple social media posts regarding that. We have a big announcement for this weekend's open house. Weather pertaining, we're going to have, it sounds like it's going to be a nice, clear day, so if you guys are around, please feel free to join us at One Fire Authority Road from about 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. It's very family-friendly, and it's a good, a good time, so if you have nothing going on, we encourage you guys to please show up. And then that concludes my report. Any questions?
A few days ago, I heard a very horrible accident on the corner of Western and Ceritos, and within minutes, your boys were there, so please say thank you to the, to the troops over there.
I will do, thank you.
Anybody else? Perfect, thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming, it's really great to see everybody's faces. Please, I would like to see you guys once again. You know, we have a Commissioner now that was appointed at 18 years old, so I'm very happy about, you know, what, what we have going on. Have a good night, everybody.